And items one and two are for approval or disapproval by the planning commission. Item three will be a recommendation to municipal council. Before we get started, we will have a pledge of allegiance by Mr. Howard and a prayer by Ms. Ellsworth.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Our dear, kind Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to serve our community and to learn together about some of the issues and opportunities that we can improve. We pray that thou will bless each of us with a sound mind, that we can think through all the relevant issues, and please bless everyone in our community that also serves those in employee positions and elected positions, and especially the those who work in the fire department and the police department. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right, we'll start with row call. If we could start with Ms. Wynden, please.
Maria Wynden, no conflicts.
No conflicts.
Russell Phillips, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Jayman Rowan, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Thank you, commissioners. All right, we will start off. I will read in both items one and two together since they are related. So item one, Tyler Bangarter requests conditional use approval for residential duplex on property located at 745 West 100 North in the downtown Gateway or GW Zone. That's the Dixon neighborhood. And along with that, Tyler Bangarter requests project plan approval for a duplex located at 745 West 100 North in the downtown Gateway Zone in the Dixon neighborhood. And Mr. Wright will present items one and two.
Thank you. So here's the applicant's property outlined here in red to orient us. It's on 100 North and between 800 West and 700 West. The property has an existing duplex, and on the deep lot, they're proposing to build an additional duplex on the rear portion of this property. The proposed development is a permitted use in the downtown Gateway Zone. So the conditional use permit in item one is actually related to the lot size. And so that's kind of what, I'll go over here first. The minimum lot size requirements for the downtown Gateway Zone are greater than those of this lot, but there's a, an existing provision in the code that's related to prior created lots, which would apply to this property. And in that, it's basically saying if your lot doesn't meet the minimum requirements of the current zone, which is the case here, that they would need to obtain a conditional use permit prior to development. And so that's what they're requesting here. The requirements for that are that the applicant shows that consolidation of the property with adjacent properties isn't really something that'd be feasible in this case due to development that's on all sides of the property. That would be difficult to, for them to do. The other criteria would be that the type of, that the minimum requirement would result in a project that would be inconsistent with the characteristics of the surrounding area. This isn't necessarily the case with what's being proposed, and the lot size wouldn't really affect what's being proposed and how it fit into this zone. And then the third criteria would be that if it's approved, that they wouldn't need any additional things like a variance or an exception to make the project work. And so that also, they've shown staff in their project plan that they're able to develop the back portion of this property in a way that would meet all the other requirements of the downtown Gateway Zone and not need any type of variance or exception. So staff feels that those criteria would be met and that the conditional use permit would be, should be granted. We don't have any proposed conditions, so if the planning commission has any, then they can state, you can state those. As far as the project plan, I'll kind of get into that here now. So here's a close-up of what's being proposed on the property. You see up at the front of the property, there's the existing duplex, and then those first two parking stalls behind it to the, to the south are the parking that's for that existing duplex. And then the back portion from, from there back is what's being proposed in the development here. So they'd be adding additional parking that's covered to match with what's covered there as well, and then the duplex would be situated in the back of that deep lot. So as far as the parking goes, the existing duplex was, has legal parking spaces, one for each unit there. And then the new duplex, they're providing 2.5 parking stalls per unit, and so they'd be in compliance with the parking requirements that we have. And then I'll go to the next slide. It's just going to orient the site plan, and we're going to turn it counterclockwise so you can keep oriented there. So now north is pointing to the left of the screen. There's bike parking that they've added underneath the new parking, covered parking area you can see along the side of the property there, and that would meet the parking, the bike parking requirement as well. So then the setbacks on the property in the downtown Gateway Zone, there's a 20-foot rear yard requirement, which they would be meeting. They'd provide a 20-foot rear yard behind that project there. The side yards in the, in the zone have a zero to 10-foot requirement, so technically they could build up to the property line. They're keeping 3 feet 9 inches on each side, which will allow for access back around the duplex to the rear yard. So setbacks are being met for that zone. And then building height in the downtown zone allows for three stories, and they are proposing two stories, so they'll be in compliance with building height. So staff finds that the requested project plan and the conditional use permit meet the requirements of the, the zone here and would recommend approval for both. So that's all I've got. I guess we can look also at the renderings, and maybe the applicant can discuss any things with that as well, if you have questions. But if you have any other questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Wright? Ms. Wynden?
What is the, the amount of yard space that they are supposed to have? I see the yard space behind the duplex and then front yard space, but is that all that they're required to have?
Yeah, so in the zone, they're required to have a 20-foot rear yard, which they have shown there, and then the front yard, it's, that's meeting the existing dimension there. I don't have that, but the front yard setback's not changing. And then side yard setbacks, it's allowed to go up to the property line, so there isn't a requirement there. But they are providing about 3 and 1/2, 4 feet there of side yard setback, which would be landscaped.
Okay, and then, thank you. And then I, there's just two parking spaces dedicated to the front duplex?
Correct, yeah. The existing duplex that had a requirement at that time for one space for each unit, so that's just a conforming requirement there that's continuing to be met. And then the new duplex is, is meeting the current standard. They're providing 2 and 1/2 spaces per unit, so five additional covered spaces.
Even when there's this much upgrading going on, the existing duplex still has, can be grandfathered in? They don't have to upgrade to the current parking code?
Yeah, I think that's the, the way that we've looked at it, is, is that parking requirement's been satisfied for that duplex. The parking requirement for the proposed duplex, I believe, is 2.25, and they're providing 2.5, so there's a little bit of extra there that I think will help accommodate for visitor parking or anything like that. So we don't see this as something that would lack any parking even with the lower number on the existing duplex.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright? All right, I will invite the applicant, Mr. Bangarter, to present his project to us.
So, so my name's Jeff Knighton. I'm the architect that's been working with Tyler Bangarter and then Matt Bangarter, his brother's here as well, and can answer questions for, for them as the owners. But I can, I'm happy to answer questions as well as I've been working with him on this project.
Thank you. Anything you wanted to add to Mr. Wright's presentation?
Um, no, I mean, I think he covered it pretty well. We've, we've been, we've been working on this project for quite some time. We've met with the planning staff multiple times to try to, you know, address every concern. The civil engineer that worked on it, you know, worked closely with the city engineers to address all of their comments and, and, you know, feel like we're, it's a project that's, you know, small, but can contribute to some good housing in the downtown area and, and try to cover a little bit of the, the housing need that exists in downtown in whatever small way it can. But yeah, trying the best we can to do, do a good project with, with the code constraints and opportunities that are there, so.
Any questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, at this time, I'd like to open up the public comment portion of the hearing. Are there any neighborhood chairs who would like to speak to items one and two? All right. I'm about to invite the public in general, yes. I don't see any neighborhood chairs present, so if any members of the public would like to speak to items one and two, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm new to all this. We just recently moved into the neighborhood and got a little invite, so we're trying to be more involved in the community and, and possibly potentially in the future do something similar. So we're kind of trying to see what the process is, and one question we had is like property values of how this would affect and maybe what rents would be going for, how that would affect the current community.
I think we can ask the applicant to clarify that at the end of the public section of the hearing. Thank you. Any other public comments, questions, concerns? And please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mike Ball. I live across the street, that way. And my only concern is, and I, and maybe my comments can't change anything because everything is so in order and correct and, and all the directions are the way they're supposed to be, and that probably is the way it is. But I just, it's just the parking thing, because my, I, I, there's never any parks out in front of my house, but that probably has to do with the apartments across the street. So this little piece there is probably going to aggravate that problem, but maybe not, given that they have parking stalls back there and the people aren't going to park out on the street anyway. They'll have their own sweet little spot back there, and then it probably wouldn't matter. But I don't know, if they had, somebody moved in and had three cars and a trailer and, and they kind of took over, and then all of a sudden we got four more holes gone out in the front, then it'd just get to be even worse, where I mean, you can't even see the street in front of my house, which much as time is the way it is. So I'm just curious, is there any, is there any way to ensure, or is there any way to, is there anything in the, in the process where they have X amount of cars and they're going to be parked back there, and that's where they are? And I can understand if people come and visit, you're going to have more if they have a dinner party, but sometimes people load up the stalls with things that they store, and then they just keep parking more and more and more on the street. So is there anything at this juncture, before it's built, where it kind of gets put together, where people have to use it, or is that kind of, that's kind of impossible, maybe? I don't know, but that's my only concerns.
Great, thank you, Mr. Ball. We'll have the applicant address that. Any other members of the public who would like to speak to items one and two? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment section of the hearing, and I'll invite the applicant back up to address any of those concerns that were expressed by the public.
Yeah, and I'll have Matt come and talk about how they manage their parking. I did want to mention too, that we did present this to the neighborhood meeting at the last neighborhood meeting a few weeks ago, had a good conversation with, with the neighbors. Didn't have any similar questions were asked with the parking, and we addressed those, and I think everything turned out, I mean, I think the reception was favorable with the neighborhood members and neighborhood chair that was there. But yeah, Matt, maybe you can talk about the management of the parking with the...
So in our, in our lease agreement, we, we make sure that it's in there and the tenants know for sure that those parking stalls are meant for cars, that they park around back. Obviously, if they have guests coming and all the parking's full, then they'll park out front. But yeah, we make sure in the lease agreement that, that those parking stalls are left open for cars and, and not random junk, basically. But that's, I guess, how I would address that concern.
Is there any restriction in the lease agreement as to owning more than the number of cars that there are, or more vehicles than there are spaces on site?
Not as of right now, but we could definitely put something in there that would, that would allow for that, so.
I think that'd be helpful. Would you address the question about rents, or what are your projected rents?
So up front in the current duplex, we are 850 downstairs and 950 upstairs, but the upstairs is subsidized by him, our upstairs tenant takes care of the, the lot. So mows the lawn and does the landscaping, so that is subsidized right now. We're anticipating obviously a little bit higher rents in the, the back duplex with it being a lot newer. Our, our old duplex up front was built in 1945, so it is, is older. So we're anticipating rents probably in the $1,100 to $1,200 range.
That seems consistent with two-bedroom units in Provo, so that, that sounds true to the market. And the issue of property values, one reason why the staff is comfortable with this moving forward and recommending approval to you is that if you look at the surrounding housing stock, if we go back to the aerial photo, if you look at the surrounding housing and the development pattern, it seems pretty consistent with what's already there. And because it's consistent with what's already there, we wouldn't expect it to have any kind of negative impact on property values. Additionally, the way appraisals are done, I've, have never seen in my career an appraisal being done on this house, where the appraisal is done and then it says, okay, the appraisal is for X number of dollars, but now we're going to reduce that by so many, such percent or so many dollars because it's adjacent to multifamily or there's a duplex nearby. I've just never seen an appraisal done that way. When they do the appraisal, they compare the house size, the lot size, the number of bedrooms, those types of things, the comparables in the market, and that's where the appraised value comes from. Andrew, you have more experience than I probably do, so if I'm saying something incorrect, please.
Well, no, I think, I think you're right on with that. I mean, at, sometimes they do mention that if they're, but I have a nice view lot and it's never mentioned in the appraisal. And so there are intrinsic things that can add value or detract, but I, I frankly think that the new construction in this area will actually increase the values.
Any other questions from the commissioners? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion and/or a motion, and keep in mind, there are two motions that we'll need to be making on these, this evening.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Wynden.
I just have a comment, and that is that while I see this as being a worthwhile project, I foresee that it's also one that probably is not the first of its kind in Provo. And I foresee that other people, while perhaps they're not watching it right now, but they'll become aware of this sort of thing and, and be interested in perhaps doing this with their own property. And I, I have a concern that by making an allowance for the parking now, that other people might seek an allowance for either parking or some other type of thing that could lead to problems, maybe not with this property, but with other properties. And if we make an allowance now, we might be setting ourselves up for problems in the future. We can't say, you know, if somebody rents the, the current duplex, if they have, if each side has two cars, you have to sell one of your cars. I don't believe that Provo City has the right, or maybe the, the owners do, but I think most households nowadays have two cars, and so if there's four apartments on this property, it's likely they could have up to eight cars. And so I think that grandfathering in a property maybe sets, sets a dangerous precedent with this type of extensive remodel of the property. So I would have a hard time approving it just for that, for that fact. That's my concern.
Ms. Ellsworth, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm with staff, there's nothing we can do about the two, like the two parking stalls for the front duplexes there.
Well, I suppose if that's an issue to the planning commission, I, I think this one should be approved because that's the way we've been approving these in the past. But if that's an issue to you, then you can ask us to initiate some type of code amendment that would require bringing the non-conforming unit and some kind of compliance. I wouldn't recommend that, but that's something that you can certainly have us pursue and bring forward to you. On Ms. Wynden's comment about other people may want to do this, we're very soon going to bring to you an amendment to the A and S overlay zones. Those are the overlay zones that allow you to apartments. And the amendment is going to include the ability to take the accessory unit out of the basement and put it into a detached building in the rear yard, just like this. And our reason for doing that is so that people can reclaim these smaller post-war houses and use the entire house for the family and yet still have an accessory apartment on site. So I think we will be seeing more of this same type of thing, but it's going to be for one unit, an accessory unit in the backyard. We have addressed parking in those. I, I can't remember offhand, but I don't think we required in that that the front unit have an increase in parking, but we can certainly look for that, and that comes before you. Let's make sure that we talk about that and consider that.
Actually, they do. I have a house with an accessory apartment, and they made us put four parking units in the back, two for us and two for our accessory apartment.
When was that, Ms. Wynden?
2007 is when our, when our remodel was completed.
Okay.
But our original house was built in 19, or sorry, 1898.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to follow up and say that I don't have a problem with the parking, and I, I think it's a smart use of this long lot, and I like the disguised density, and yeah, I'm, I'm all for it.
Mr. Rowan?
I'd just add to that, I mean, again, I don't share the concerns about parking either, and even were I to share those concerns, the, kind of like the cost or the benefit of having denser housing in this particular area, for me, far outweighs any cost of parking. So I, I mean, I understand the, the concern, but I just feel like the more we can do this kind of thing, the, the better off we're going to be to build in, infill, have our housing there is better environmentally, economically, better for our core, so I'm, I'm all in favor as well.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Just on the parking issue, a new, and I'm sure this was mentioned and I missed it, but parking spaces per unit, what's required?
So on the new development, it would be 2.25 spaces. They're providing 2.5, so a little bit more than what's required for that portion. And then the existing duplex, it had a requirement of one, which they're maintaining, so...
And just looking at it as one, probably has seven for four units, you're a little under two. Okay. They would need, if you looked at it, if you applied the current standard to all four units...
They would need nine, I believe.
Yeah, so they'd be off by two.
But if you're looking at two cars per unit, there'd be one stall short of that, so it's, it's really pretty close. There's really not more space on the site to add another parking, otherwise I'm sure the applicant would be willing to look at that. But at the same time, we don't want to overpark these as well and, and end up with a bigger parking lot than, than what's probably needed. That duplex has been there for, I'm not sure how long, and had those two stalls, and things have worked there, so.
Which, I guess, maybe, the way you described it, ties into a concern that I have, which is that our parking requirements, off-street parking requirements, that I've, I think I've, in other situations, expressed concerns that we weren't requiring enough parking for certain kinds of multifamily projects, but we also don't want to see everything paved and impermeable and stuff like that. I think that, there, there's a cost to that too, just for the neighborhood and how things look and that sort of thing, so.
Ms. Ellsworth, did you have another comment?
Oh, I just want to say in terms of parking, looking at this image, it was probably taken in the winter and when school's in, right, for the university, and it doesn't seem like the, the street is overly crowded with, with parked cars on the street, so perhaps in this neighborhood, parking is sufficient right now.
They're all parked on 800 West, right in the middle.
Oh, right there, exactly, yeah. Yeah, and this is just a snapshot, but I don't know, it doesn't sound like one of those neighborhoods where there's a huge crunch for, with street parking.
Any other comments? Discussion?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Mr. Rowan?
Okay. I move that we approve the requested conditional use permit for residential duplex on property, on the property located at 745 West 100 North in the downtown Gateway Zone. And I don't believe we've come up with any conditions that I, I'm aware of, so I'll end there.
Do we have a second to Mr. Rowan?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. Right, all those in favor of approving item one?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So we have one opposed, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven approvals. So item one is approved.
I'd like to make a motion on the second item. The planning commission approved the requested project plan for an additional residential duplex on the property located at 745 West 100 North in the downtown Gateway Zone.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. All those in favor of approving item two? All those in favor of approving item two?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have one opposed and seven approval, and the motion passes, so item two is also approved. All right, and then our last item for the evening.
Yeah. You can talk to them, though, after, I mean, you all can go out and chat.
Yeah, we've closed it to the public comment at this time. Thank you. We had closed the public comments portion, yes, but we appreciate your attendance. All right, so item three on our agenda this evening is from Community Development concerning the campus mixed-use zone, and this will be presented by Mr. Yost.
Thank you. So what I provided to you as essentially a staff report is this memo where we summarize basically five points that we're concerned about or proposing to make improvements to the design standards of the governed development in the campus mixed-use zone. And I'd like to just go through them, talk about the rationale behind their inclusion on this list, and then solicit any additional concerns or comments from you regarding these five, or any additional considerations you think we should make as we develop actual ordinance text to bring back to you. So currently, the zone has pretty minimal design standards as far as it relates to the form and function of development. For example, it only has, requires one door per street frontage, so say we had a project that came in with 300 feet of frontage along a street in the area south of campus, we could only require one door, which from an urban design perspective is not great.
Is that, sorry, is that like the College Place on the corner of Ninth?
Yes, yes. Like that project. We don't have any other regulations regarding the fenestration or the permeability of the first floor as well. So these items that we're looking at first, requiring a minimum habitable first-floor depth to prevent the conditions we have both that we can see on the ground at that College Place or what we call specific heights on South, North, and Ninth East, where the first floor, except for the very small leasing office at the corner, is just essentially a blank wall of, have a parking garage. Or the south side of Joaquin Village, or the Village at South Campus on between Fifth and Sixth North, that the south side sits on top of the parking garage and doesn't provide any, really any accessibility there. Downtown, we require 30 feet. I'm looking at this to try to perhaps come up with a way to require a depth that would be usable and habitable and make sense without perhaps mandating a specific depth, so that there could be flexibility depending on the top of product, the depth of, you know, if they were doing a double-loaded building with a corridor in the middle, maybe their units aren't 30 feet deep, and maybe they're 25 feet deep. And so doing a first-floor unit fronting the street that's half of the building width and putting parking behind it, as long as it's actually a unit, if it's actually a real usable space, it's not just a token five-foot entry lobby with a stair up to a second level. So those are one of the considerations we're looking at with the first one. A second, looking at a minimal, minimum number of pedestrian building entrances. In downtown, we require an exterior entrance for each street-facing residential unit, and feel that that's probably a standard that we feel comfortable applying wherever we do have street-facing units in a multifamily product. One potential issue with that is that we know from the interactions that project proponents have had with BYU regarding receiving approval for BYU contract housing, that the housing office is, from what we gather, pretty wary of having individual entrances into units from the street, would rather have one access-controlled unit into a corridor. So that may be something that if we have a big project come in seeking BYU approval and trying to meet our standards as well, may be something that results in a further discussion about that requirement.
Excuse me, is that for safety issues, or why is that?
Yeah, that's their opinion or their attitude, the fewer the access points, the safer it is. And so just be aware, as this discussion moves forward, we could be putting people in a situation where if they follow our guidelines, they won't get BYU housing approval. We have an applicant in process, he is in process because he hasn't submitted the application, but he just met with us a week or two ago, and we went through these kind of requirements and said, this is what you'd have to do. This is pending legislation, so this is what you'd have to do, and just be aware that this may make it hard if you get housing approval. He's hoping that he's going to be able to do both, be able to put enough entrances to satisfy the city and to make it attractive and permeable for pedestrians, and at the same time, still get their approval, but just be aware of that, that we could be creating a difficult situation. We discussed this with the Joaquin people and neighborhood committees, and their attitude is they want to get what works for the neighborhood and is less worried about what gets BYU housing approval.
Right.
Well, they have those townhouses along Ninth East that have, you know, individual entrances, and those have BYU-approved, that's BYU-approved, isn't it?
And it's changed, their requirements, what they ask people, has, we've received different feedback on those requirements, just in the time I've been here, let alone since some of those townhomes were built 30 years ago. And even this Village at South Campus on the 600 North face of it, some of those units do have patio entrances. So it's a little bit of a black box for us, but we do know that some of those condo projects, those townhome projects are less desirable to BYU, one, because they're having to deal with a lot of different property owners, and also because of those kind of situations where they don't have the access control.
I think it's unlikely those would get approval today.
Okay.
If those same projects would get approval today. In a recent, not a recent meeting, in a meeting we had probably about a year ago with BYU Housing, we even talked about what if there were two different demographics, where you had doors and units on the street, and it was more of a townhome, maybe brownstone type of product, and then behind that was the condo building. And the units out front would be married BYU students that don't need BYU housing approval, and then the condo would be the single students that would need housing approval. The attitude of the housing office was those two demographics don't mix, and so they would not be favorable towards something like that. So those requirements do change every time, and they can be strenuous.
I want Mr. Yost to finish his presentation, but I will just say that that whole issue of entrances for individual units is kind of like the tail wagging the dog. The dog is Provo City, and the tail is BYU, and they're trying to force their standards on the city, and I don't think it's appropriate personally. Mr. Yost.
Oh, no problem. Next, requiring a minimum percentage for first-floor windows and openings to ensure that we have permeability, both vision in and out, and a sense of surveillance at the street. Downtown, we require 30% as a percentage of frontage length. We're looking in the revision of the design standards whether percentage of length or a percentage of area is appropriate as we move forward, and in this area, probably something along the lines of what we've done with residential frontages in the downtown would probably be appropriate. Next, this one is a little more specific, or less broad in its applicability, but it stems from some of the projects that we've seen that have provided commercial, public, ostensibly public, commercial within a site or other amenities that are intended to be public, not purely tenant amenities, but have been located in such a way that they're not visible and not very accessible to, nor do they really engender the perception of public accessibility to the rest of the neighborhood. So we're looking at requiring that all commercial that's included in the site, whether it's required in some of the areas where the Joaquin Plan requires mixed use in the campus mixed-use zone, or if it's voluntary, that that be sited along a street frontage, that it has some contact or frontage on the street. For example, at Joaquin Village, there's a, some kind of sugary beverage purveyor up in the middle of it, and except for the little sign at the stairs, it's very illegible, very hard to see that it's there, and it doesn't engage well and really create an amenity for the neighborhood. So while we're not anti-courtyards or plazas or things, those need to engage more directly with the street, like we see across the street in the new Liberty Center project. And then lastly, we really want to regulate site design to ensure that the parking is located interior to the building or the site, and that vehicle access is consolidated. One of the issues that you see as you drive throughout that northern stretch of the Joaquin Neighborhood and even extending to the west side of University adjacent to BYU, is that there are, the sighting of vehicle entrances is not always very ideal. They're very conspicuous, they are located in the middle of buildings, or they're located in such a way that it provides a lot of consecutive vehicle crossings across the pedestrian zone. And so really encouraging the consolidation within projects and between projects of those vehicular access points, both from an aesthetic standpoint, so it's clear that the building is meant for people to go in and out of it, so that archaeologists and sentries don't look and say, these buildings must have been made for really big people. No, they were made for the metal boxes. We want it to be, these buildings to be really oriented to people, so that's the last specific element that we've called out on here. So I'd like to hear, all right, need to hear your feedback, and any additional suggestions or concerns you have with what's presented, or anything else we need to take a look at.
Ms. Wynden?
Well, you've mentioned the Village at South Campus several times, and, you know, I was a spectator when that was all being discussed. And, you know, everything that they said, promised, and some vague sense of the English language they provided, but, you know, very vague. You know, they were supposed to have a pathway through their complex so that anybody, not just people that live there, but anybody in the neighborhood would be able to walk through the apartment complex, because it was going to be so big, and it was taking the place of a public facility that, you know, everybody in the neighborhood used. And, but they built it up so high that, you know, it's not usable, it's not walkable for the community. They agreed to have commercial there, but again, as you mentioned, you know, it's all inside, it's not welcoming to anybody that lives around there. And, you know, so again, it was something that they said that they would do, they did, but it was, so I guess they've kept the letter of the law, but, you know, definitely not the spirit, not what people expected. Parking was another issue, and, you know, you've been to all the Joaquin meetings, you know what's going on there with the parking. So, you know, so how can, you know, you hold somebody, when they say one thing, but then they start to build, and they build something entirely different, you know, what do you do? What can you do at that point?
I think there's two questions there. The first is that we need to make sure the ordinance, as we write, very much embody and specifically and objectively codify the spirit. If we want something to be on the street, we need to say, it shall be on the street. So they can't say, well, we provided commercial, and it's kind of, no. Does it actually touch the street? Show me on your plan. Show me your percentage of windows. Is there a door there, or is there not a door there? Things that we can check off without trying to, without having to interpret. And the second is the question of if somebody doesn't build what's been approved. I think in that situation, it was less that they didn't build based on their approved plans, but their approved plans didn't fully embody all of the, what the neighborhood feel felt had been committed. But if somebody isn't, starts building, and it's not based on their plan, if it's their fault essentially, then a lot of times, we make them stop and fix it. But we've got one of those issues right now, and they're always a little hairy. But luckily, that doesn't happen very much, people actually physically building something different from what has been approved.
But you're right, in the Joaquin planning process for that neighborhood plan, it was the neighbors themselves who said, please don't do another Joaquin Village to us. And we said, what do you mean? And they said, well, it's kind of a fortress, it doesn't relate to the neighborhood, that you can't just walk through it the way you were talking about, there are doors and windows at street level. So they said, please don't, it's great once you walk inside of it and you're inside the development, it's great, but it just doesn't relate to the streets around it. So I thought that was very insightful for the residents themselves to see that and to ask us to put into the plan goals and objectives to keep it from happening again. Now we're trying to take the next step and put that more into code and zoning so that we have better teeth.
Yes. Ms. Ellsworth?
I just want to say I wholeheartedly support this. I don't know if we can ever repent of what happened at College Place, but I don't want to see that again. So I appreciate any specifics, any advancements in this, I appreciate it.
Mr. Phillips, did you have a comment?
No.
I guess I'm next in line. Mr. Anderson?
Just a couple of things I'd love to maybe talk about as part of the discussion. Setbacks, which really, for me, is just kind of building interface with sidewalk and what happens in some amount of space between building and right-of-way.
So again, because of the project that's been referred to about a year ago, we came to and we increased those setbacks for residential buildings. And at that time, we told you that we're just addressing setbacks now, but that we would come back and have even more amendments to propose, and so that's really what this is, a continuation of that amendment from a year ago.
So when you say setbacks, to make sure I understand what you're saying, are you more concerned, like Bill mentioned, with the distance, or how that actual space is utilized and how that, the design of that interface?
Both. And I'm not sure that I have a magic amount of space in mind. I think probably as much as anything, it's what can you do within a certain amount of space, just to, and maybe to add this, I think the effort that has been made to create environments that are more maybe pedestrian-accommodating or pedestrian-friendly, and I think a lot of these design standards kind of relate to that idea that you want certain things happening at street level that encourage a certain kind of interaction, that sort of thing. I think sometimes having a little bit of room there actually makes that experience a lot more, a lot more pleasant, and therefore likely more conducive to it. And I don't know if this relates to what we're talking about here, I don't think it does. Maybe for me, it's part of the spatial kind of question, but there are great things that happen at the street level throughout the downtown part of Provo, where you have like outdoor seating, which I think is great, and you have like sandwich board signs and things like that, which I'm also a big fan of. But spatially, that kind of adds to some constraints that you have, and when we get to densities that we're talking about and things that I think we haven't yet fully seen the impact of that and just what that means for how things work, it's almost like the discussion we had about the Transportation Master Plan earlier, where, I mean, there literally is a certain capacity and stuff like that. So for whatever it's worth, that's, I guess, partly what I'm kicking around in my head and thinking about.
So the next building I think you'll probably see will be Glenn Rowland's project that is just west of Campus Plaza and just east of the Life Science Building on 800 North. And he did push his building back just to make sure that we could create And he did push his building back just to make sure that we could create some of that seating area and pedestrian activity space that you're referring to because he's going to have commercial space on his frontage, just like Campus Plaza has slab pizza and the hair cutting place. This new building will have similar space and we've pushed it back so we can have that, enough room to do some things with it. But Mr. Rowland's been extremely cooperative to work with and has taken our suggestions to heart.
I appreciate that. The other thing, and I know there are some standards in place, I don't exactly what they are, might already be addressed, but covered parking, like parking garages and that type of thing, and just the interface at the driveway and sidewalk intersection. So visibility and maybe distance. So thinking more about how it works with the street than the pedestrian as well, but distance from intersections and that type of thing is just part of an overall design criteria. I haven't come up with a way necessarily to, to create good lines of sight, you know, for just what ends up getting built and what it is and how it works, but that's something that I wonder if we could talk about just to see if there, and there may already be some things in place that I'm not aware of, but those are my two issues. I like everything else, love it.
I just had a few things that I thought of as you were describing all of these points. On the first one, talking about the minimal, minimum habitable first floor depth, I think that's very important. And I think I might either add to that or add a separate bullet that street level, street facing facades must contain active uses such as commercial, retail, or residential. So that you actually say it has to be an active use. I've seen some areas where it may be used for storage or, you know, things happen.
Right. That would probably be good to call out because we've usually said habitable means it has to have occupied, it has to be occupied space. But I could see somebody say, "Well, it's storage." I get a certificate of occupancy for a storage unit, is that not stor-, you know?
Yeah, so specify an active use.
That has to be... Yeah, that's a good point.
And I'll just, can I just add really quickly? I mean, even you have the shot up right here. I mean, how many times do you ever see a human being in that corner window? It's never, do you see, well, I mean, I've seen people there occasionally.
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't know if we could come up with something that would avoid that, like, I don't even know what that is, but try and, that, that might, someone might come back and say, "Well, this is habitable space, this is active use space," but you never see anybody there.
And listening to Maria's concern about the complex where supposedly you could walk through some municipalities, if, if you have a development that occupies an entire block, so let's say 300 feet basically, that they, they don't require, but they encourage pedestrian passeos or passages at street level. So that could certainly be something you include, that it's encouraged. You can't require it, but you could certainly encourage it. And state that upfront.
Because we do have some blocks in the area where the zone's currently applied, especially between University Avenue and the University north of 800 North that are quite long, north and south. And so if somebody could actually exceed our downtown block length because there's just not like 100 or 150 north of the Brick Oven, that block goes quite a ways before, I don't even know if there's a cross street before you run into the practice facility. So that...
So you could require a pedestrian way if it exceeds a certain length, for example, 300, 350 feet.
Or if it has, you know, commercial space, there has to be a connection to the parking garage that will bring people to the front of the building so we don't end up having double loaded commercial spaces, that type of things.
In terms of first floor windows and openings, I, I think it's wise to base it on the, the area, a percentage of the area, the surface area. And I, I would even suggest that you break it down by first floor and floors above the first floor. They could be two different ratios so that you don't end up with dead walls. You know, and that requires them to provide adequate fenestration so that you have a lot of interest and, and the only other thing I would comment on would be, or actually I had two, about commercial, where it's included in the site. I would specifically state at street level, not just street frontage. So just, you know, state it plainly. And then concerning driveways, I would regulate the location as Dave was talking, but I would also regulate the width because what you don't want to see is somebody with a 35, 40-foot driveway in the middle of a pedestrian zone, you know, limit it to 20 feet.
And we do currently have required widths for those and in the downtown, we say you can't exceed the required width. So that'd probably be a good thing to add here.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that.
This condition on the screen.
Those, those are all my comments. Mr. Rowan?
I really appreciate everything that has been said. I agree with all of it. I just had a question about that last one about the parking, regulate site design to ensure parking is located interior to a building or site and that vehicle access is consolidated. I mean, I know that you want to be broad enough that you allow different sites to configure things a little bit differently. I just, and I don't have numbers, recommended numbers like, like Deborah had. I wonder if it's worth a discussion about, you know, is there a way to be a little bit more specific than that? It seems to me that this of all of them is the most ambiguous in terms of the way that it's articulated and would allow someone like Maria articulated earlier to kind of fudge things or, you know, what counts as interior or what is consolidated and, I mean, tell me just more about what you've been thinking and why you didn't get more specific there or what you had thought about doing.
Well, to assuage the concern about that a little bit, this is not ordinance language at all. This is just me saying these are the...
The categories.
These are the categories of things that we're going to look at. Yeah, so I will definitely say parking is not permitted along a street frontage because you have to have your habitable first floor space. I will probably say parking is not permitted, there are maybe only one or two levels of parking are permitted above that habitable first floor space and the fenestration has to match the rest of the building so you can't tell it's parking. That driveway entrances have to be located a certain distance away from intersections, that they have to consider the location of driveways on adjacent parcels, that, you know, joint access or cross access agreements, agreements or configurations are, you know, suggested, those type of things. Or in the downtown, we say if you've got an alley, you have to use the alley. Don't, if it's a primary street, you have to put your driveway on the secondary street, those type of things. So there'll definitely be specifics and when I bring the actual ordinance language back to you, but it's good to hear your specific concerns related to each of these items so I know what to make sure is really laid out clearly when we propose the ordinance language.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think, I mean, that, some of the parking that offends me kind of aesthetically the most is the, some of those projects on University Ave near the library where it's, it's not just kind of on the street, but it's like multiple levels of, of parking that are visible. And I don't know if, you know, if you have it on the interior, I guess it doesn't matter. The multiple levels don't matter as much, you know, but it's that you're just being affronted not just with ground level parking, but, you know, kind of the split level parking.
Yeah, like kind of some of these projects here on the screen.
Ms. Ellsworth, you had another comment?
Yeah. Do we ever regulate the color of building finishes?
No.
Okay. So we can still build this College Place BYU blue facade?
Yes.
Okay. And looking at College Place more, there's really no setbacks. I mean, in some areas, there's some like one or two feet maybe. Is that something that you could consider when you look at kind of a variety of setbacks and step backs?
We could. It, it seems that as I've been doing this, setbacks work best when you have kind of a podium tower configuration where you've got more of like a four to six story block. Sometimes it gets awkward, like some of the projects on Center Street like Liberty Center, like that, that didn't need that 20-foot step back of the third floor. But if you have like a 10-story building that had a tower and a base that had a different profile, that would probably be more appropriate. Some places say if you go over six floors, then you have to have a step back of the third floor, but you can go up to six floors without a step back.
Okay.
So there is, we definitely could look at that. With the height limits in the CMU, it may be less of an issue. And with Campus Place, it may, a lot of it has to do with just the absolute lack of any mediation between this very stark building and an eight-foot piece of concrete before you're on 9th East.
Gotcha.
So that's definitely something we can look at and try to balance and see if, considering if the additional step, setback regulations can mitigate some of that or if there's something more we need to do.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Wynton?
You have in the code for downtown, I think, for City View, for the, the first floor, the, in order, gosh, I'm sorry, the first floor windows and openings, the, the steps, the, you know, one or two steps down to the sidewalk, was that dictated by their design or is that city code?
That you have to have the steps or...
Yeah.
So at steady, City View, we actually have a maximum elevation above curb that applies in the downtown. And just like at Liberty Center, a couple steps into a residential unit is a really good way to transition between public, a semi-private and a private space. Where we got into trouble there is that they started building and building and then Utah Valley Transit Contractors started building a road. And we didn't know where the road was until the building was already in the ground and they came out and surveyed and said, "Actually, the curb's going to be here." And said, "We can't get from these doors to the sidewalk in the amount of room we have to make steps." So some of those actually lost step. There's two units on the south because University is going, dropping to the south. The building has to stay flat because it's on top of a structured parking garage. And so step, stepping that deck is really, adds a lot of complexity. So it's a combination of our requirements that they did have to connect to the street, but then also the logistics of building a project where you didn't actually know where the curb was going to be when you finished because it wasn't in the same place as it was when we started. And we lost about 10 feet of space behind the curb too. So instead of having room to deal with that transition, all of a sudden now we had to make up that space in six feet.
So BRT caused a grading problem for us. That's how it turned out the way it is.
Okay. But the ones that do have the steps, they look nice.
Yes.
And so is that something that you could add to the design standards here?
That's, that's something we could add and something I have in the draft of the downtown revisions to recommend stoops or patios for residential to kind of provide that little bit of separation between the public and the private there for those type of frontages.
Yeah, rather than just the single door that's there on the, what's it called? Campus Plaza on 9th East?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, thanks. That was it.
Mr. Howard?
I don't have a lot of technical advice, but, but looking at this, it seems like it's consistent with the previous discussions we had regarding aesthetics. And I think freedom of movement is important to students and young people as they trans, go through campus or off campus or access the bus. That has been, the infrastructure that's been expensed and put in there. So I think it is a aesthetically a move in the right direction. I always have concerns about security too, but I think onus on, on a free society is, is part and parcel to the people who put in apartment buildings and things like that to have adequate security and also of the individuals themselves. But I think if, I think it fosters a vibrant freedom of movement that's in a positive
I just had one quick question. Are there any requirements in this district for any kind of special street lighting? So lighting that would be geared towards pedestrians as well as vehicular?
We have no differentiating streetscape standards in this district. And district lighting is actually something that we've had some conversations about. Our Energy Department, which maintains our street lighting infrastructure, has a vested interest operationally to minimize the number of different fixtures that they warehouse and maintain. So like on 100 West, we said, you know, could we use a different kind of fixture? We found a fixture that actually has a, a cantonary cable that runs across the street and has these linear lights that hang on it. We thought, man, this could be a real way to differentiate. This is a unique corridor and Energy was really like, uh, no. So we have the single and double posts that we have downtown. We have the standard Cobra Head. And then we have the double-headed lights that have been installed in the Utah Projects on South State and 300 South that are the poles that have the, a shorter luminaire on the sidewalk side about at the middle of the pole and then a taller luminaire at the top of the post reaching out over to light the vehicle way. The catch with those is they're like 26 feet tall or something.
They're big, yeah.
They're definitely first or second floor residential unit glare sources, but we couldn't get a compromise to stock a different post, even if it was the same luminaire and assembly. So...
I'm just wondering if...
Something we'd like to do.
Yeah, as development incrementally occurs along in this district, if you could require something like the downtown fixture.
Yeah, if, if...
It would definitely be an upgrade for pedestrian activity.
We could definitely require that single pole or single headlight on a certain center. I think it would really help both from a lighting perspective, there's some really dark areas in that area and from just reinforcing a district identity. Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that.
If you require the spacing and trees maybe in between those, you know, like you've done in some other areas, I think that would be helpful. Any other comments? And we're a little unclear on this, whether we are supposed to propose anything on this?
Yeah, no action is recommended to you on this tonight.
All right, cool. Good discussion. All right, I guess that wraps it up. Commissioners, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second? Seconded by Ms. Wynton. Hearing is adjourned.